Bonnie, I think you can go ahead and start the recording. Thank you.
Yes, recording has begun.
Okay, great. Good morning, everybody. I am calling this meeting of the Public Safety Communications Task Force to Order. It is 11:15 on April 24th, 2024, and I'm Barbara Neal. As a reminder, the meeting's being recorded, and that recording will be posted to the Task Force webpage following our meeting. Let's start with a roll call of Task Force members. So please verbally acknowledge your presence when I call your name. Jen Morrison.
I'm here.
Morning. Jim Mack?
Here.
Morning, Ron Kumets.
Here.
Okay, and I'm scanning my list here. I do not see Paul White, Michael Wright, or Mike Dungus yet. We can proceed with the quorum. So also joining us today and filling in again for Callie is Sonny Johnson from the Enhanced 911 Board as our administrative support person. And also with us are our project management partners from TeleVate, Rick and Dom.
Hello.
Hi, everyone.
Great. And I also see from Mission Critical, we have Rand Stuffy and Phil Sisk. Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, there are a couple, three looks to be members of the public. If you'd introduce yourself and share any affiliation you'd like to when I call your name. So Senator Renner, go ahead.
Good morning, everyone. I serve on the Joint Information Technology Oversight Committee.
Nice to have you here.
Thank you.
Stephen Whitaker. Stephen, if you're speaking, we can't hear you.
I think we actually just lost Stephen.
Oh, okay, he's dropped off. Well, I imagine he'll rejoin. And Kim Cheney. Well, I see him on the list. Maybe he's away from his computer at the moment, or otherwise can't be heard, but we will continue on. Did I miss anybody in the roll call? Okay. Excellent, then. Let's move on to approval of the agenda. So the agenda was distributed to Task Force members by email. It's also available on our webpage. Do Task Force members have any changes to the agenda today? Okay, hearing nothing, we'll consider the agenda approved and move on to approval of the minutes. This is for the meeting that was held two weeks ago on April 10th, regular meeting number 23. Do Task Force members have any changes to these minutes? Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes from April 10th?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Ron.
I'll second it.
Okay, I heard a second, I think, from Jim first. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand or indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Right.
Aye, thank you, Jim. I see Ron's hand. I heard Jen, and I am voting aye as well. So those minutes are approved. So let's move on to public comment. I'd like to, in total, have public comment be limited to 10 minutes. So you can kind of bear that in mind. Senator Renner, would you like to offer any comment today?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay.
Just here to listen.
All right, excellent. Thank you. Kim Cheney? Kim, if you're trying to speak, we can't hear you. So we'll let us know by raising your hand or speaking up. There we go, okay.
I'm a listener today.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Stephen Whitaker.
Oh, yeah, I'm here. I hit the wrong button, disconnected myself when you asked me to. So we've learned in the SPA report that an extension was granted. I understand a two-year extension was asked for, but a one-year extension was granted. If y'all can clarify that at some point, that would be useful.
That's not correct, Steve. We asked for 12 months, recommendation of DOJ staff, and we give them 12 months.
Okay, I think the most from, I'm going to speak to the SPA report, Dan Hawkins' report. And I think the most significant and cogent line in there is found on page 25. And it says, finally, our reluctance to discuss alternatives arises from the limited scope of our review. The overarching goal of the grant, quote, "transition to statewide or regional emergency communications," close quote, is easily met. It's hard to imagine a project that could not serve that goal other than a failure of governance. Hint, hint. So I'm going to stop with the quote there and speak to clearly Hawkins is a skilled, did provide a skilled assessment of the wish list. But for the most part, it's mostly you get what you pay dearly for, $8,000 a week for three weeks, and it's mostly happy talk. It's not a plan. It comes nowhere close to meeting the statutory requirements of 3VSA 3303. And experts have said, somebody's really out to lunch to be proposing using LTE for backhaul to these radio sites. So there's no significant P-25 densification, nor any clarity on how this is not getting out ahead of the locating of the dead zones. Finding the dead zones in both the LTE and the LMR canopy are moving at a slower pace. I don't know Mission Critical's schedule to complete those tasks. But in effect, we could be squandering money that should be used for a densification in another or more focused manner. But fundamentally, we lack an architecture. We have no concept of what the state's radio system and the state's microwave system is going to be used for in the long run in support of the transition to regional dispatch. We're building, quote, "a statewide system," but for whom? Is this for use by the regional authorities and for use by towns? That would necessitate the goal of a trunked system that combines all these state and municipal frequencies or regional frequencies to provide a bank of spectrum which talk groups could be created from. There is no architecture to delineate that. So in effect, we're investing $9 million to the detriment of the trust and the cooperation of the regional and local. I talked to a lot of local and regional people, almost all of them from all over the state, passed through the State House. And the local disdain for this effort and for the department, the mistrust, the resignation, the avoidance is not something to keep sweeping under the rug. And it's going to only be made worse by spending this $9 million on the department's own infrastructure. Lacking an architecture, unless the architecture is defined and it's very clear and evident by impartial you know, folks, that this is in support of regional dispatch. There's no assurance or plan that shows that the regional dispatch is going to be able to ride on the state's system. Currently, there's not enough, the state is not going to tolerate regional responders talking over there or consuming their limited bandwidth. So the 10-year telecommunications plan draft refers to a consolidation of dispatch. But there's no, and that apparently came from the DPS contributing their statutory requirement to the plan. But there's no articulation of what that means or how this, you know, radio systems are going to support that. So we have the risk that we're going to spend the $9 million as a distraction from the overall long-term goal that we've set out on, specifically the mission critical scope of work. It's dubious that this has any significant support for regional dispatch other than the opportunity for colocation. The dead zone remediation is not, there's never going to be enough dollars in this to fill the dead zones in the state canopy. We should probably focus on filling the dead zones in the regional canopies and then allow the state to co-locate on those towers if that solves the dead zones in the state's canopy. So the focus should, we should take a pause. We should reassess. We've got the one-year extension. We should reassess whether that gives us sufficient time for Mission Critical to get a planning framework and to get an architecture in place that will demonstrate that the congressional intent is being met, meaning support for the transition to regional dispatch. Otherwise, we're going to make a mess of this, if we have, as more than we have already. So we should be, the focus now should be on pairing resilient regional systems so that they're sooner ready for storms that will be coming. The state can co-locate on those towers, but the path we're headed on appears to be, you know, waiting a year or more and coming up with a $300 to $500 million pie in the sky ideal fantasy trunked statewide radio system for which there will be no funding. And this will have been an academic exercise. So that's some pretty blunt warnings. I would welcome y'all to actually do your job and talk about this stuff in public session so that we could begin to get an idea of whether we're building capacity here or we're just, you know, showing up to rubber stamp preordained decisions. Thank you.
Whoop, sorry, I was muted. Thank you, Stephen. I see Paul White has joined us. Good morning, Paul. And are there any other public comments? Okay, moving on then to project updates. Let me turn this over to Dom at TeleVate.
Thank you, Barb, and good morning, everyone. Primarily, the, over the last couple of weeks, the team has been concentrating on preparing the data collection activities. Data collection, a draft data collection forum was developed by MCP, and I believe there'll be further discussion of that during today's meeting. Also, MCP and TeleVate have met together to coordinate wireless data collection activities, what those would look like. We've also met with Corey Chase, with the DPS, who is also the SWIC for the state, and discussions about the wireless, current wireless situation and facilities throughout the state. Also, we are working on the inventory and assessment schedule, which we hope to have a draft of soon. And other activities, TeleVate and Task Force chairs have been finalizing the project FAQ, Frequency Asked Questions document. And we should have that finalized this week, and we're also developing additional outreach plans. We also expect to have the completed April stakeholder update complete soon. And as many of you know, separate from the system planning effort, but of course related, is the strategic planning project, which was received independent review from a separate contractor. And I believe there'll be further discussion on that at this meeting. TeleVate is also reviewing the strategic planning project, list of projects, and will provide some input to the task force as well and how that relates to the system planning effort. I think that's the summary of activities for this period. Happy to answer questions.
We did it again. Task Force members, do you have any questions for Dom? Okay. Moving on, the next agenda item is the report that Dom just referenced, the Geospectrum Strategic Planning Assessment for the congressionally-directed spending plan. So last week, Callie distributed a copy of that report to everyone. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review. And I just, before we open this up for discussion, I just want to reiterate what Dom just said, that TeleVate is taking a look at the CDS plan also and may come back with guidance on any recommendations or input on any recommendations that the task force may have related to that for the Department of Public Safety. And specifically, we asked TeleVate to look at the plan and see how it aligns with or advances the mission of the task force and to help us identify elements of the plan that are foundational, right, that would be, that the work would likely be beneficial to any and all plans that Mission Critical may develop. And also that look at elements that may be restrictive. In other words, work that, if it was completed, might restrict the options that Mission Critical was able to propose or likely to propose. So that was kind of the angle, the direction that we gave TeleVate to take a look at that plan. So we hope to have more information on that for discussion at the next board, next not board, task force meeting in a couple of weeks here. So Jen, are you in a place where you can do any introductory comments on the Geospectrum report? Or can we just open it up for comment?
Yeah, go right ahead. I mean, the report is what it is, and folks have had a chance to review it. And I think that if folks have feedback relative to that, that they want TeleVate to consider as they prepare their report, then that's, this is the appropriate time and place.
Great, excellent. So, Task Force members, any comments, feedback, input, thoughts on that Geospectrum report?
So I actually spent over two hours on the phone with Dan Hawkins before that whole thing, you know, he made his reports. And I'm looking at what's in the PS, you know, laundry list of things that they want to spend. And from my perspective, there's nothing that they plan on doing with this money that in any way hogties them or us moving forward. They're reinforcing the system that they have. All of their base stations are P-25 compliant. And trunking is a software option in those base stations. I, unless I missed something, I believe that what I read was that LTE was only to be used as a backup backhaul capability in what they're proposing. So I think that what they're doing is essentially, you know, patching some holes in the dike. And whether that amounts to, you know, a universal statewide law enforcement trunking system is yet to be had. There's some issues with the, you know, the the cost and whether or not it's necessary. Certainly, I don't ever see, or any EMS being part of a statewide trunking system. So I don't see any reason that we should make an assumption that that, what's being proposed with that $9 million limits us anyway.
Okay. Thank you, Ron. Anyone else, Task Force? Ron, I have a question. You said you don't see that EMS would be part of a trunked system. How will we, what are your thoughts on how we'll meet their needs?
So let me, let me, let me take a step back and give the, sort of the layman's description of the difference between trunking and conventional radio systems. A conventional radio system essentially uses, you know, each frequency is essentially a talk group. And you can divide them up using subtones and audio capabilities. But the reality is that, for the most part, each frequency is a talk group, and whoever's using it is tying it up. In a trunked system, what happens is that there's a small group of frequencies, and those frequencies are dynamically allocated to people who want to talk based on the need. So let's just assume that we had four frequencies, and you keyed your radio and you wanted to talk to Jen on your talk group. You'd be assigned a frequency, and then if I wanted to talk to Jim, I'd be assigned another frequency, and that would go on until we ran out of frequencies, and then you get a beep that says there's no more frequencies available until one of them frees up and they can be reallocated. It's sort of like, you know, spaces on a train. They're reused. People get on and off at different stops. The problem with doing that for fire and EMS is that trunked subscriber units, the individual radios, are extremely expensive when compared to the ones that they're using now, the conventional subscriber sets. Some of those, some of those radios, the the cost of repairing one is more than the annual communications budget of some of the fire and EMS agencies in Vermont. So even if we were to fund it with some sort of a grant, we build a grand trunking system, we give everybody all the radios they need. Five years down the road, when somebody backs over one with their truck, they're going to, they're going to probably decide that they are not going to buy another one. So now, instead of 10 radios in their department, they're going to have nine radios in their department because they literally can cost thousands of dollars versus hundreds of dollars. And so I think that the needs of fire and EMS can be met with regional simulcast boating systems, which are very similar to what they're doing now. And all of the costs of the enhancement to that system are infrastructure changes. They're all based on the individual repeater sites being linked together and stuff. So that can be funded through the, that could potentially be funded through, you know, our dispatch budget to maintain those systems. But the individual subscriber units would essentially be the same radios that everybody's been buying for many, many years, which are much, much less expensive. And Dom or Rick or any of you guys want to chime in on that? I'd be happy to hear your comments.
Thanks, Ron. I agree with primarily everything you said. Certainly, the trunking radio systems, the radios are significantly more expensive. That is accurate. Many of the radios today are made to be to be able to communicate on different types of systems, on conventional systems, conventional analog, conventional digital. When you go to trunking, it is digital that is required. And you typically have an adder onto these radios for that additional capability. So to your point, a conventional analog system or radio might be one price, you know. And certainly, they're available and for hundreds of dollars. You know, maybe close to $1,000 depending on the type. You add several hundred dollars if you want to do digital, and you add several hundred dollars if you want to do trunking, and you add several hundred dollars if you want to do encryption. So yes, the price of those radios certainly increases rapidly. You can do conventional simulcast regional networks as you proposed. And we see that certainly in lots of municipalities. That is an effective way to to improve coverage from what you have today, make things operationally somewhat simpler in terms of you're supporting a larger, or you're covering a larger area with a given set of frequencies and doesn't typically require the user to change frequencies, for example. So yes, that certainly can be effective. What generally drives many users to trunking is the need for additional capacity. It's generally much more spectrum efficient. When you have a large number of users, trunking can support a larger number with the same amount of frequencies. That's, that's one of the big differences. There are additional features with trunking as well that, you know, may be useful for certain situations. But those are generally the discerning factors between a conventional system and a trunking system.
And just to add to what Dom has said, consider five to 10 times the cost of the radio device itself from, from, you know, a simulcast, analog simulcast network to a trunked network. So he's right, the cost of devices and the maintaining of the devices can become certainly a burden for volunteer fire departments. And, you know, whenever considering switching to that, you've got to look at your operational expenditure requirements going forward. And certainly, you would need to maintain a budget for replacing and upgrading radios. Now, there's operational efficiencies from, as Dom indicated, from a trunking network. But they can't, they can't, they won't overweight the consideration of the operational expenditure costs that comes with it. So any assessment of going forward for a statewide trunk network, you've got to, you've got to look at your OpEx and your ability to sustain the network going forward.
I appreciate all that input and context. That really helps me to get a better handle on what challenges we're looking at here. Paul?
Yeah, so just, I'm just making sure I understand what, when Ron said he didn't see fire and EMS in Vermont ever going to a trunked system, it's not from a technology incompatibility standpoint, it's from an affordability standpoint.
Yes, and the other part of it has to do, as they mentioned, you know, the primary driver in using trunked systems in many places is capacity and the efficiency of using frequencies. But even if you look to, if you listen to a VSP dispatch channel, there's a lot of dead airtime. They're not really capacity limited, and certainly the fire and EMS agencies aren't.
Okay. Okay, excellent. I want to circle this back to the topic that we started on, which was the Geospectrum report. Are there any other comments from Task Force members about that report at this point? Okay, I would just add that my impression of it was that it was clear and well-written, easily understood, which I much appreciate. And I'm looking forward to getting the additional input and feedback from TeleVate on the plan, and we'll revisit this conversation at our next meeting. So if there's nothing further here, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is the Dispatch Center Survey Question Review. So just a little bit of background on this. At the last meeting, the plan was to have a smaller group of us take a preliminary look at the Mission Critical Dispatch Center Survey Questions. Some questions arose as to whether that group actually constituted essentially a subcommittee of the task force and whether we, and if so, we would then need to have open meetings to have those discussions, which is fine. But we then ran into getting a copy of the draft in the proximity of this meeting. It just seemed to make more sense at the time. Anyway, the simplest thing to do was to simply bring the draft questions to the full task force. So that's kind of why we had that change in direction, and that's why we're here. I'm hoping that everyone has had a chance to review those questions. I am going to have some very specific feedback on all of the questions that relate to or reference 911. So in generally speaking, all of the information about 911 call volumes and all of the other metrics can and really should be provided by the 911 Board Office. So we can identify all those different areas. But many of those questions should also be asked as they pertain to the seven and 10-digit lines within each dispatch center. I mean, you don't need to ask about call vol, a 911 I mean, you don't need to ask about call vol, a 911 call volume on those because we can provide that. But what is the call volume otherwise on those lines? So I think the one way to approach this is to go section by section, not question by question. And provide.
Barb, can you send a copy, can you send a copy of those so that those of us can follow along who are tracking this?
Yeah, I thought that they were distributed. Am I wrong on that?
They weren't, not to us interested parties as far as I know.
Okay, Sonny, do you have a copy of them?
Yes.
Put you forward to Steven.
And send me one, please.
Sure, anybody else?
I'd like one as well.
Senator Renner, okay.
Okay, do I have Senator Renner's, what's your email address?
I W R E N N E R at legatestate.bt.us.
Okay, I'll get right on that.
I think they were, they were distributed to the interested parties by Cali on the 19th.
Okay, I thought they had been, but we can resend, we'll resend right now. Thank you, Sonny. All right, so let's take a look at the comments, or the survey questions. Actually, let me defer right now to Rance Duffy. Is there any introductory information you'd like to give to us before we kind of go through these?
Sure, thank you, Task Force, and good morning. The data collection questionnaire is information that MCP is putting together to start the remote data collection process that we discussed in the contract and some of our kickoff. So obviously you can tell with the document, there's lots of pages, lots of questions to be asked. I know I'm going to be taking notes as Barbara, I like the ways you're going to approach it. If we just kind of want to go through the sections, I'm going to take some notes so we can make some adjustments. And there'll be additional adjustments to be made, so I want to keep it in mind, Barbara, if you guys, if you want to wrap up at the end about maybe a way that we can, I don't know how you want to do another review and/or my question would be, do you want an official sign-off by the task force as a whole, you know, to move forward, kind of a thing? Is there, are we looking for an approval, you know, a final draft of this to review to be sent forward out to the agencies itself? So something to keep in mind as we, as we kind of go through the review of this.
Okay, and Jen and I had talked about that very thing before. Depending on how the conversation goes on feedback, I think one of the things I might recommend is that the task force basically authorized the chairs to ensure that Mission Critical has incorporated all of the feedback in a manner that reflects the discussion today. And then does that official okay to get the survey out? I know that there are, we do not want to introduce any unnecessary delay in moving this forward.
Correct, and that's also the same thing that, I mean, that we're looking for, we're all came into this and we have a timeline that we're all trying to get this information to get the report together. So whatever you have, I'm going to look at it as administrative reviews, administrative details that kind of delays things as we move along. So yes, that would be great, that's why I'm going to take the notes. We'll have some additional, probably some additional edits internally even on our end because that's what's going to happen as we take the notes. And if we could just have a way that we can at least, I like your words of meeting the intent of the discussion today and as long as you and Jen sign off on it and agree, and then we can kind of, we can move on from there with getting it on out to the agencies.
Okay. Do we want to see where we are at the end of the discussion and then make that decision? I think, let's do that with the task force, we'll make that decision at the end if that's the way we want to advance. So, thank you, Rance. Looking then at the survey questions, I've kind of divided it up in my mind by sections. So Section 1, it would be contact information and demographics. These are questions 1 through 12. Is there any feedback or comments from task force members on questions 1 through 12?
I have a question on 6 and 7, that's the only thing, I think in that section I have any questions about. 6 is what is the population of the total jurisdiction served? How is that being looked at? Is that just the 911 call-taking population, the fire EMS police, or just total?
It's just, this part, this part would be just general demographic information, so just the population. So that's also setting out that are we talking about a regional dispatch center? Or, and I know you have some cities or counties and things like that. So we're trying to just get an idea of the population of people served by the dispatch center, just a number.
Total population.
Yes.
This is an interesting point though, and I think I understand what Jim is asking. So a PSAP would cover a bigger population perhaps for 911 call answering than it might for dispatch. The 911 board could provide the information for the 911 call-taking piece. So when the survey goes out, perhaps this needs to address or to specify that we're talking about the dispatch function. What is the total jurisdiction, population for the dispatch function? Does that make sense, Jim?
Yeah, well, I, you know, I serve two towns for police. So that population's really small compared to what I served for fire and EMS, using Shelburne as an example. Memorial, St. Albans would have similar situations where my police population that I'm serving is much smaller than my overall population.
Okay.
So I was wondering if you wanted it broken out individually or as a total, just what's the maximum we serve?
I think we'd be looking at is the maximum you serve as that agency. Because another piece that goes into this and it's all about collecting the data, when you pull that in, that helps us be able to do the calculations to determine various things in the report to be able to give you a good recommendation on whether potentially a change needs to be made or not. And so that's kind of how you tie the population to it. Keep in mind, as, I'll add this as we go through this, this is going to be things that they're going to be filling out and James, you bring up a good point. Whenever someone gets stuck on a question going, well, I don't understand maybe why they're asking this or how I should answer that. We do have remote data collection question, we have a working session, I guess is the way to call that, that we will. So if you came in and you had that question, say they did, obviously they're not sitting on this task force meeting today and that agency out there said, I have a question about that population thing, they can ask that directly to us. And we'll set that up after we set these out to them. So that way, when people such as yourself has that question, they could go direct with us and ask, hey, why are you asking, what is this for, how does this impact?
And my second question, number seven, was similar to that. My PSAP coverage area is different from my police, fire, EMS. Is that the total square miles also?
Yeah, you're correct, same.
Okay, good enough. Anyone else?
Can we, yeah, can we dwell here a quick second?
Sure.
It's not clear to me how Mission Critical is going to get an accurate picture if they don't break it out by discipline. Because Jim Mac's shop is a good example. Their coverage area for EMS and fire is far bigger than what they dispatch for police assets. And if you go up to St. Albans, they've got, you know, dozens of EMS and volunteer fire departments that they don't have a comparable number of police dispatches for. So I just don't know how we're going to get an accurate picture if we don't break it out by discipline and that's all.
Okay, I see your point.
That's kind of where I was coming from.
Okay, I do too, I can see that as well, so based upon what you're describing to me at this point. So I'm making a note about that and we can make that adjustment. Again, keep in mind for the whole group, every one of these are, they're obviously addable and adjustable so we can insert questions and we can insert other criteria into that, so duly noted.
Okay.
I have some comments about items 8, 9, and 10. And I like to provide a little background information to preface my comments about those. The Division of Fire Safety was tasked with surveying the fire agencies in the state of Vermont. And we know there's like close to 250 of them, at least 225 of them. And when they did that, they got responses back from only 50% of them. And nobody's really sure why, it's possible that they don't have the correct contact information. It's possible that no firefighter from that, certain agencies has taken a course so they don't know the agency exists. And it's also possible that, you know, those agencies somewhere feel disenfranchised and not part of the fold. So they're just not interested in taking time to contribute because they don't think it has any benefit to them. Now, having said that, Shelburne, for example, dispatches, I think, is it 24 fire departments, Jim? Something like that?
Yes, something like that.
Which represents 10% of the fire departments in the state, I mean, ranging from the Canadian border to almost Rutland County. And I think that if we were to employ the dispatch people filling out these questionnaires to get ahead of ourselves with respect to those agencies and modify the items 8, 9, and 10, not only to just ask what agencies they dispatch, to provide, you know, the town that that particular agency is serving as well as the agency and some contact information because I'm sure that they know where they're sending their dispatch bills and things like that. We might have some, you know, we can maybe able to get out ahead of ourselves so that when we go to survey the agencies, we're talking to the right people. We're not just sending emails to people who don't exist and stuff like that. So I think it would be valuable to allow the small number of, you know, probably in the know, dispatch people filling out the questionnaire to give us some information about those agencies so that when we need to talk to the agencies, we've got accurate, up-to-date information.
I think that sounds reasonable, that sounds reasonable and logical to me. I know even the information that we provide from the 911 board, it feels like, as far as like non-emergency contacts or administrative contacts can easily get out of date. So this might be a good place to get the most current data.
Let me ask a question to restate so that I make sure I'm understanding. So let's take question 9, it says fire rescue agency served dispatch and they list ABC agency. Not because I'm not familiar with all the names yet, but they list that agency. And then next to that agency, you know, that we, they could go ahead and provide as a contact person for that agency. So say like that one, they dispatched 15 different fire departments. I could restate the question to go ahead and put contact information next to each, for each agency. All right, we can certainly put it in there, I mean, if you want to go that route.
Right, and I think it's also useful to grab the information immediately about which communities those agencies serve. For example, the town of Sudbury does not have a fire department. They contract with the town of Whiting to use the Whiting Fire Department. So somewhere along the line, if you went to look for the Sudbury Fire Department, you wouldn't have any idea who to call because there is no Whiting, Sudbury Fire Department. So it would be good to gather that information because I'm sure there's other small towns that do not have a fire agency or an EMS agency or a police department and all that kind of stuff to get out ahead of this so that we collect as much accurate, usable information as we're going along in each exercise that we participate in.
Okay.
Okay, noted, I'm not, I'm in.
Okay. Any other comments from task force members on the Section 1 contact info demographics, questions 1 through 12? All right.
Hey, Jim, this is Rick. I was wondering if we might use this opportunity to also gather contact information for the LAN Mobile Radio Network when we're asking for contacts, you know, right up front, you may use this because there's going to be different people that are available to give various information. And why not have we asked to gather, you know, that, you know, some additional contact information that are going to be engaged in the project?
Hey, Rick, I think, I was thinking the same thing, but I was going to bring that up on item 27. Which is a question about radio.
Why did I get it? Yep, I agree, I have the same note there as well.
Okay, fair enough. And I should, I should have said at the outset, when I'm asking for input from feedback or from task force members, certainly that includes our project management team, Rick and Dom. So feel free to chime in at any point, sorry I didn't call that out earlier. Cam, I see your hand up, I think we have a lot of questions to go through. I'm thinking maybe we should have public input at the end, if that, let me defer, let me consult here with Jen Morrison. What approach would you like to take on that?
I don't know how much time this is going to take.
Right.
Perhaps we allow, we just have members of the public, if they have input, to email it to our task force email and then that can be considered as we try to put together the final form and.
Okay, that may be one way. So certainly that's an option and let's see where we are at the end of this survey. And if the time allows, we'll allow for another brief round of public comment. Okay. All right, moving on then to the technology section, I'll call it Section 2. This would be questions 13 through 33. Comments, I have a couple of comments in here on questions 16, 28, and 32. But I'll go to other task force members first. All right, I'm hearing nothing yet, so I'll kick it off at question 16. It asks, do you have a hardware upgrade or major CAD change planned in the next two years? Which I think is a great question, but I think we should make sure that it clarifies here or maybe elsewhere or specifies that we're not just looking at CAD changes, it would be any changes to dispatch systems. So LMR, RMS, whatever else is out there. So I thought maybe there could be a little bit more clarity around that. Does that make sense, Rance?
It does, noted, I was writing it as you were talking. So we could adjust that because we could also add, what we'll probably do is I will make another, like an open section just below that. So if they do answer that question yes, then, because I know that's kind of an open-ended question because it depends on what they have going on. So we'll leave it as an open, so we'll add those other elements there like LMR, RMS, CAD and things like that nature and then put an open remark there below it and then they can elaborate on exactly what's going on. And then that way we can provide that information back.
I think that's good. Okay. I mean, I'll jump to question 28 because that's my next comment, but others should feel free to interject here. 28 is just.
I wanted to talk, yeah, I want to talk about number 27 and I think Rick has some comments about that as well.
Okay.
So we all know that when we go and interview individual agencies, we're going to get a variety of levels of accuracy when we ask them technical questions about their radio system. So the first comment that I have about 27 is it sort of, it sort of leaves a question open for a very short response that will tell us nothing about what they're doing. Using Jim's facility as an example, they're using both VHF and UHF and they're using no less than 12 base stations, three of which are on the same frequency to talk to the 47 agencies that they dispatch. So I think it would be tremendously valuable if in that question, since we're pretty sure that the dispatch facilities all know the phone number of the guy who repairs their radios, programs them and sets up their consoles and stuff, to ask them by agency what they're saying in terms of frequencies and, you know, which base stations are being used for more than one agency. which base stations are, are being used for more than one agency. Um, and while we're at it, we can also get the name of the radio vendors that, that are responsible for them, um, as well as any ancillary information like PL tones and paging tones and that kind of stuff. Uh, because it would just be tremendously valuable to gather that. And while somebody is filling this out, we can get, we can mine a tremendous amount of accurate data, um, that we're not going to get from some other places. Um, so we might as well get it from the people who actually know it. Rick, you have further comments on that?
Uh, yes, Ron, I, I have a just, on my note, I just say, you know, what is the, what's the proposed process for obtaining inform, you know, the detailed information you're talking about on the land mobile radio network? Um, we, we understand that dispatchers know radio because they have to be able to, you know, to steer the calls to the appropriate sites and frequencies. And so they, they normally, what we've learned in working in the state is, is that the dispatching group have great deal of, of information and knowledge about radio networks that in other markets they may not. Um, but, um, I think it's important because there is a, a great deal of, of information that has to be gathered. And, and this document, you know, this, these questionnaires are very focused towards the dispatch center operation. And, and when you just, you know, when you, when you look at the radio network, it is certainly a, a, a beast of its own. And so my question here was what is the process for obtaining the detailed information that you're talking about? And perhaps, perhaps Rance and, and, you know, can, can talk and Phil can talk to that approach. Because I think once we understand how they're going to gather that data, we can provide, you know, some guy, some additional guidance based on all of our experience.
Exactly. On the radio side of it, um, I, I will fully admit that it's not completely completely developed out yet because we have a whole wireless component actually looking at this, you know, looking at this report itself. So that question was an existing question that we had in place. I think based upon the conversation that's going on, and it goes to Rick's point, it might be better suited within this questionnaire to go ahead and set out the radio technology pieces as its own whole section. And then, and then ask a series of questions based upon that. Internally to our, our side of it, I have some additional meetings with our wireless people. And I think some additional questions are going to come up. Uh, Ron, I also got some of your feedback from before, uh, as you got these questions in the first place. And then Rick, between Rick and Dom, I think we'll need to have some more specifics with that on the radio side of it to develop those questions out. So I think for now, if this will help, uh, I know we got a lot to go through on the radio and the wireless piece. I think there's still, still some major components there, some questions that either will or may not even be completely addressed into this particular questionnaire because that's such a large, uh, animal of its own. Let's use those terms to, to pull that information together. So if, if that'll help kind of maybe move this along a little bit more on that part of it, but we're more than happy to.
Number, we make number twenty-seven basically, uh, who is the, uh, the radio person for your, your dispatch? That, that way we know who to direct it to.
Yeah, a radio contact, any whoever that may be, whether it's internal or a vendor, correct? Okay.
Yeah, and, and I would use the plural because there's, there's bound to be contacts.
Oh, yeah, no doubt. I'm sure there's more than one.
Yeah. Yeah, there could be, you know, radio shops and then there are leads from each of the agencies. And so it could, it could get, uh, bigger. And we'll have the, we'll have the platform on, on question twenty-six. I, I, I like to question what manufacturing model, I, I would also ask about the number of, so we know how many, you know, how many we're dealing with.
Gotcha.
In terms of radio consoles.
Uh, Phil, I see your hand up.
Uh, yes, I'm sorry. Want to make sure I was not on mute. Uh, this before we ran by question, uh, twenty-four. Space on some of the previous discussion, I would suggest we add Annie Alley to that list specifically. I realize you could ask about it in other, but there seems to be, or seem to be some, a lot of discussion around Annie Alley and whether the CAD, some people apparently do have the interface and some people don't. That's a, in my opinion, a very important interface to the CAD. And I think we ought to have a special checkbox for that.
We can do that here or the nine-one-one board can tell you who we have connections with and who gets the, the alley dump from us. Or maybe both and see if the records agree, right? So.
Noted on both Barbara and Phil.
I would certainly say it wouldn't be the first time that s- some people may have access to information in a comm center that they don't know about and they go, oh, wow. I mean, you know, sometimes that does happen. But just, it just, there's a, I mean, it's just a key piece of information and there was some confusion about it. I would just, want to make sure we're collecting that and analyzing that somewhere.
All righty. I'm moving on if there's nothing further.
Barb, thirty-two. Barb, I, I have one, one general, uh, uh, overview question. We ask about the, you know, the, the, you know, the RMS and the CAD and, and, and the jail, uh, managed for small valuable. But, but it's important to understand whether or not they're meeting their operational requirements. Because, you know, what we learned in central Vermont is that, you know, the, the CAD system that's used is really not meeting, you know, the, the fire requirements. And so, you know, it, it's good to understand what they have, but, you know, what should we take this opportunity to get their feedback on the quality of that or whether or not it meets their operating requirements?
Rick duly noted on that, on this question, it kind of gives us the baseline of exactly just what, what they have, what they don't have. If you're also remember, we will be on site and, and visiting these places in person. And that's where we're really going to dig into, hey, tell us your, that, that winds up kind of being a, as you know, from agent to agent, it could be an opinion question about, is this fulfilling your needs? Is this do what it needs to do for fire and REMS? So it, it, it is there, it just won't be in here yet. We'll get to that. Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, absolutely, Rance.
Okay, thank you.
Um, question twenty-eight, I had a, a note on, I wondered if this is the place to get feedback from each dispatch center about known, um, excuse me, known dead zones in their area? Or if there, is that being collected in a different way?
It, I know it will be on the wireless side. So I think that kind of ties right back into that whole, looking at the wireless pieces, a whole subsection of this, and maybe breaking that out and then addressing that at that point within that, if that'll help.
So that'll get the radio dead zones too?
Yes, that, that's what I'm, that's what I'm referring to, yes.
Okay, all right. Okay. Um, I, I heard, yes, I heard you, Jim. Um, I have a comment on, on this one, um, the nine-one-one, you can actually remove this question.
Um, you have that information.
Yeah, the answer is yes, and, um, and I can give you more details on where we are, Rance, in the NG nine-one-one evolution.
I, I knew, I knew was putting this together that some of that information was available, but I want to go ahead and get it in there. That way everybody gets to see it and then we can just remove things as we, as necessary. So, noted.
Perfect. Okay, so that brings us, anything more on this section, which goes through, uh, question thirty-three? Right?
Yes.
Move. You're good, Jim, or you have another, you have more feedback? Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, one of the questions that Rick brought up about how many positions and stuff actually comes in the next section.
Okay. All right, we are moving on then to the next section, facilities and equipment. So this is questions thirty-four to forty. Um, generally speaking on, well, on question thirty-four, I had a comment that the nine-one-one board can tell you how many nine-one-one workstations there are in each PSAP. But it will be good to have a clear sense of how those are being used in each PSAP. Um, some may be nine-one-one call-taking only, others might be combined with dispatch. So, um, I think the question is appropriate. I just wanted to make that clarification because at the nine-one-one board, we know there's different operational scenarios out there. Um, but we don't, uh, we don't manage them. So, uh, it would be good to collect that info.
Understood.
Um, other questions on section or questions, other comments on questions thirty-four to forty?
Well, thirty-four kind of gets into what Rick was talking about before, how many console positions and so forth. Um, I, I would specify what you consider a workstation. Uh, because not all my workstations have nine-one-one at them, as Barb was referencing.
And we're looking at that one, uh, it would be like a total. So even though, do you have like, for example, for, for purposes, do you have nine-one-one call-taker only positions?
I know ours are, um, multifunctional.
Multifunctional, okay. Really would just be, it would be a total of. So even if you had, say you did have call-taking only positions and you had dual positions, we just need a total of. And then if you, then as you went through those, as you see in the notation, you could notate, hey, these are only call-taking positions, only they bear radio and dispatch. So I understand which, I understand where you're going with that, Jim, yes.
Hey, hey, Rance, would it make sense to actually list the, the types of devices you're looking for? So that, you know, they're there and they could say the number of, um, you know, instead of leaving it open?
Yeah, we can, we can actually break that out a little bit better if, if that'll make it clear. Because that question's not clear in that way, so yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I had a, I had a similar comment about question number thirty-nine about, you know, it says backup power. And, and the phrasing of some of the questions, that one hit, just sort of stuck out. Um, sort of invite the possibility that the person responding to the survey will just simply say yes or no. Um, when, for example, for thirty-nine, if you were to say, do you have backup power? And what type of backup power do you have? And, you know, how long will that backup power last? That, that sort of causes them to have to actually go ask somebody and think about it and give you some useful information rather than making you guess, um, that they have one of those two thousand watt, you know, Honda generators that'll power their console for an hour or two.
Acknowledged.
Got that, Rance, okay. Um.
So Barb, I'm sorry to be dense here, but I, I, I'm on question number thirty-three. Um, sorry, I went backwards, but what non-essential critical systems does the PSAP have? So, you know, that, that, that could be interpreted very differently by others. And I was just wondering if in parentheses, for example, such as, you know, because, you know, what is it? What, what do you constitute non-critical and what do I constitute what might they? So, you know, I, I think if we give them some examples of what you're looking for there, that would, that would get, allow them to not ask you back, what do you mean here?
Gotcha, Rick.
All right, got it. I have a comment on question forty. Um, you can remove the reference to nine-one-one phones in the last part of that question. And I can provide more detail, but there's, there's redundancy built into the system already among all the six PSAPs.
Gotcha, okay.
Um, anything else on questions thirty-four to forty? Okay, moving on then to the section on operations. This is question forty-one to fifty-one. Um, there are a number of questions throughout here that I, or maybe this comes as a header at the top of this section. But I think it's important to specify in many of the questions that we're looking for the information specifically for the dispatch function in each center. So, for example, question forty-one, list any existing service level benchmarks, metrics or adopted national standards. The nine-one-one board can provide you with the national standards and, and other, uh, metrics that we have adopted. Um, but, or, and, we also need to know that on, the task force needs to know that on the dispatch side. It, because there may be differences there. And what the board has adopted for a standard has, um, nothing to do with what happens on a dispatch line. So I just wanted to make that clarification and you'll hear me say that over and over again. So I'm sorry for the repetitiveness, but.
Perfectly understandable, yes.
So I think this whole section might need that kind of, uh, a look-see. Other task force members? Okay, um.
Barbara, I do have a question back to you on that part. On forty-two about the structured call handling protocols, is, is there anything mandated from the state about using those in any fashion? Or is that still a local decision to use?
The nine-one-one board has a statewide standard, so all nine-one-one call-takers use APOCO, EMD protocols. Um, but EMD, fire and law protocols.
So all, all, all three, all three.
Uh, on their nine-one-one lines. We do not, cannot mandate that they use them on the dispatch line. Some may, I don't know. So, some who have our tools may use them on the dispatcher, may require them on the dispatch side. Um, a- and it's possible that other dispatch centers have some sort of structured call handling or dispatch protocol that they use that is separate from that, from what we provide.
Okay. This generally, would that question generally would probably would, would be more directed to your PSAPs because we're looking at the, the incoming call handling when they take the nine-one-one call, which would clearly fall into the state nine-one-one boards, uh, your, how you're set up and what you provide. So th- this question, we'll review this internally. We may or may not even need to ask this because if we already know that everybody has that and it's available and it's provided, and that's the, that's what the state has done, that just eliminates a whole question altogether that they even have to deal with. But I'm, I may have notes.
Keep the question in there.
Yeah, I agree, Jim.
He said, for, for the agencies that, uh, may answer a call that comes indirect to their seven lot, seven-digit numbers, they may still have a protocol that they use, whether it be PowerPhone or APOCO or whatever. I'd still like to know that.
Yeah, noted.
Yeah, or it could even potentially be something that's been developed in-house. Um, I think you're going to get a wide variety. Well, it's possible.
No, I, I.
Yeah.
And there's no doubt it wouldn't, I mean, we've seen lots that, that obviously use priority dispatch, APOCO and, and PowerPhone is another one that's out there. But we've also seen a wide variety that they, they've made their own in-house and that, so that's can be perfectly acceptable. So, yeah, we'll, uh, notated, we'll go on from there.
Okay. Um, and then I, I did not have any other questions through question fifty-one. Does anyone else have input on any of these questions? Oh, actually I did have a question, but other task force members on, on this section?
Um, I am just curious what item forty-eight is referencing. Not being a dispatcher, I, I, maybe I'm missing something obvious here, but I just want to ask the question rather than making some assumption.
Sure, it is more of a, it is a generalized, a generalized question for kind of help with the staffing is, is per that agency that filled that out, what would be like an average number of units per, for the workstation? So it's an average number.
Um, but what being a unit is, I guess, my actual question. So, sorry, I guess I didn't give you the correct question.
I understand. Unit being, uh, uh, officer, uh, vehicles, uh, ambulances, that's, that's the units that we're talking about. Well, it goes to clarification on the units, is that kind of what I'm gathering out of that?
Yeah, that's, that's what I was trying to figure out, what constitutes a unit?
Gotcha, we can do that, we can make a perfect explanation there.
And, and you know what, that might be, you can ask Jim, I'll defer to Jim. That might be, you know, obvious to a dispatcher person, it wasn't obvious to me.
That one, I didn't have a necessarily a problem with what, what are units? Um, the problem I more or less have with that is, um, our, because all of our positions, we work hand in hand together. So, you know, I, I don't have dedicated units to my dispatch desk. Um, some places like Burlington may have that, where you have a police dispatcher that's just dealing with that zone or whatever. But for me, in my center, we don't. And most of them I don't think do.
And in that case, probably for you, Jim, it might just be that, it might be one number because your units may be the same for each one of them. It's just kind of an average, you're looking kind of at an average loading per the position. And it, and it obviously would adjust, yeah, you, you get that, okay.
Okay, fair enough. Uh, moving on to question forty-nine, I, I just had a, a couple of questions here. Um, vehicle releases, is that a VIN, VIN inspection is, what are we talking about, vehicle releases?
On that is, let me give you a, let me background, a little bit of background on that one as well. Uh, this is another one, just to kind of see if there is a lot of, you know, we use the term if they're ancillary duties because you, you realize there's a lot of core PSAP dispatch functions that they should be doing. And then a lot of agencies have dispatchers do a lot of, uh, extra, extra, uh, work on particular things. And it's perfectly fine, it just depends on where, that's what we're trying to look at for staff. perfectly fine. It just depends on where, that's what we're trying to look at for staffing and loading and seeing what changes can be made. So vehicle releases from what, the way that we have looked at is, they would actually pro, say that car's been impounded and they, they process that paperwork and they, they would release that vehicle. We have run across some agencies that do that. That's the reason this is, this is somewhat generic and it's also a big other at the bottom because we also know there's lots of different functions that sometimes that, that these personnel do, so.
I would add a little more area for the other.
I understand. Yes. We, we ran across this a lot where we know there's a lot of other stuff that goes on, so. We'll make a big box for him, Jim.
And the tornado sirens too, I just, I mean, is that?
That they would, that, that, that they're, one of their functions is to primarily activate like, I mean, if you use the terminology, they actually flip the switch to turn the tornado signs on for whatever that jurisdiction they are. We, we've seen that where they are primarily responsible for that function.
Okay. Mercifully, we don't have too many tornadoes here, but I suppose it is possible.
That's true. It is, it's very, it's very kind of where part of the country you're in, so.
Well, we don't have the tornadoes, but we, we used to in Shelburne actually control a couple of overhead sirens.
Okay.
Exactly. That's, that's exactly what it's about. It's just looking for those duties that aren't necessarily considered standard practice as primary responsibility, so, or core functions.
So in order, because there are that many tornadoes, might, might it make sense to say emergency warning instead of using the word tornado?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, we could probably take what is in the quote, you know, in the, in the parentheses there, early, early warning systems, we can kind of generic that, that way it'll probably cover that.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm moving on then, if there's nothing further here.
Chime in here second, Barb.
Sure, Jen.
I'm not, I'm not sure how we would do it without just becoming very painful. And it's probably better suited to the onsite visit. And like, you know, getting to see what's happening in an operation and taking note of that. But I can tell you that the three dispatch centers that I have had responsibility for in my career do very, very different types of side work. I guess that's what I'll call it is side work. And there are, I think we're going to run into an area where we're going to have such a difference that we might want to try to quantify. So when you're in Burlington and talking to the people who, who are, you know, run that shop, is it worth asking them to estimate how much of their FT, each FTE's shift is spent doing side work? Because that answer is going to be really different in different places. And you might find out that in some places it's upwards of fifty percent of their hours of their day or their shift are spent doing side work. And in other places, it's going to be zero percent. But that's worth knowing because I have, back in the day, we did a ton of administrative work, typing of narratives, photocopying, like, there's just a big, big array out there and I think we need to quantify that somehow.
Exactly, agreed. I, I made a note of it, Jen, and I think you hit it on, on the head of where we're at. We're, we're going to wind up getting a little bit more into that. It's going to be really hard for them to depict that here as, as Jim said, you know, making a big other box. It'll be better to, to get our head around that when we're meeting them face to face and seeing how, what, what they describe as a lot of their ancillary duties.
Fair enough. We are approaching the planned closing time of this meeting, so I would like to check in with task force members to ensure if we continue that we can maintain a quorum. I, my preference would be to, to slog through these questions. Any concerns about staying on the call for at least another thirty minutes, I would guess? Okay, I'm hearing nothing. I almost called you Callie. Sonny, you're good to, to stay with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great. And how about mission critical and televate? Are you good to keep plotting, plotting through?
Okay, sorry, I gotta go, so I'm out. No, no, I'm scared. I guess I have to say, so, and I am totally joking. I thought it was a perfect segue since I've, I've got all the questions, so.
Yeah. You could have put an end to the discussion quickly.
Yeah, you guys can go ahead and talk about it if you want. No, I'm just kidding. I'm very much kidding. Yes, drive on, drive on, please.
Okay, all right. We will continue on then. We're moving to the next section, which is personnel. And this would be, sorry, personnel and staffing, this would be questions looks like fifty two to seventy seven. Comments here?
This was all pretty straightforward for me.
Hey, I didn't have any comments here either. I don't think I'm just scrolling through to double check. All right, good. Moving on then to the next section, which is currently labeled nine one one calls and incident data. Overview here, I would change this to dispatch call volume or dispatch calls and incident data, something like that. So, so this is again an area where we can separate out the nine one one call volumes and metrics from what happens on the seven and ten digit lines. And I think it would be worth specifying that somehow without, I don't want to introduce any confusion where we think we don't, where we cause the dispatch center to think we are not interested in the number of nine one one transfers they get into their lines. We do want their records of that. We want to know everything that happens on their seven and ten, ten digit lines. And I can give you the totals for the nine one one piece by piece app separately.
Okay.
So.
Question seventy eight. Total call volume to date for the current year. My question is that call answered, dispatched, or both?
Yes. It would be a total that, because you kind of, we get into that, Jim, that's kind of, yes, we kind of catch her at all there at the beginning. And then if you notice what the, the questions behind that, we kind of break, start to break that out to get an understanding by discipline, you know, and, and, as you can see as you go on, so. We're just looking for total call volume at that point, at that, at that time of the day, or that time of the year.
Um, my question, or, or my comment is, is about, what is it, items eighty eight, eighty nine, ninety with total law enforcement, fire, and EMS incidents. And, and I would suggest that the total call volume per agency is one aspect of this. But speaking from the fire side of this, if you want to get an idea of what the, the, the loading on a dispatcher or dispatchers will be, you need to, for that facility, understand, for example, the number of structure fires as a separate line than the number of carbon monoxide alarm calls. Because a structure fire is a tremendous workload for dispatchers, whereas the vast majority of other calls don't take very much time at all. So if, if, if on a facility basis, not on an agency by agency basis, you, you break those down into some categories, you'll have a better idea of how much the dispatcher is, for example, spending on, you know, structure fires, or I, I don't know what the equivalent might be in a, you know, in, you know, in, in a law enforcement situation or if they're on the phone giving instruction how to do CPR or something like that. It's not a very simple transfer of, oh, take care of this call, have a nice day, give us a call if you need us.
Agreed, Ron, on that. On this one, at this point, we just need the number of the actual incident. And we totally acknowledge that the fact that, that there's different times allocated to the call volume, you know, the type of call itself, especially a structure fire. So at this point, the, the purpose of that one for the, to be able to calculate it into the, the staffing and the worksheets and the way we do that, it just simply needs to be a number. But even though I know, I totally acknowledge that a structure fire takes a whole lot longer than dealing with a typical service call. But we just need the number of the amount of calls for that particular agency. Does that, does that make sense at this point?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, not discounting. Don't worry, we're not discounting the fact that we know that part of it. It, when we do, in our calculations of the staffing that we do on, kind of on the backside, and you will see that there is accounting for that. We know that a fire dispatcher in the fact of if they get into a structure fire situation, that, that is going to take a tremendous amount of time. So you'll see that kind of, the way to explain that, you'll see that later on. We just won't, you won't see it up here in the front part of that.
Okay.
I have question about, and I think you have the same thing, Barb. Question eighty through eighty three, eighty six, ninety one through ninety two, and ninety four should all be nine one one.
That's exactly my note. Yes. So we can provide all of that, yeah.
Okay. I, and again, goes back to the one I, we, we had a knowledge of it. We thought you might be able to do that, but we wanted to go ahead and at least get it in there to make sure that we got it covered. But yeah, again, that helps. As you already know, how much debt, we're, we're looking at a lot of questions here. So anything else we can kind of either reduce and we can get that information from a one source, that's great. So yes, we'll, we'll make notices on that.
Okay. So, let's see, my other note. Help, don't call volume is fine, text to nine one one.
But.
We've already talked about those, yeah.
You have the VoIP, you have the VoIP information as well, correct?
Yes. Yes, I hesitated because I, I need to confirm how granular it gets.
Gotcha. And we, we can always, maybe I can follow up with you individually later. And if it doesn't, then we can, we could either leave it in there or we can adjust it, so.
Yep. Yeah, I think, there was a time when it was not granular at all, but I think we are, we have better reporting on that now, so. Okay, I have, I think Jim Mack called out all of the items that I was going to address. So I think I'm good on this section. Anyone else?
I have, I have another one, eighty seven. Total NCIC state queries for the last three full years. This is probably a question to the commissioner. Can headquarters dump that out for all the law enforcement agencies?
It's worth asking Director Wallen what, what the art of the possible is. I don't happen to know the answer off the top of my head. But before we let this fly, we should certainly pose that question to him.
Got it. I got a notation at least, I will get with you guys offline to figure it. If I need to go direct with him, I can just do that and ask that question.
Good enough.
Hey, Barb, I want to jump back real quick, one that I came across. Does, does the state keep track of the text and nine one one calls as well, that volume? The, okay, got you.
Yes, we, certainly call volume, duration, I'm going to assume we can pull, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Even if, even if the duration's not there, the volume itself would help, but just want to make a notation for myself, okay.
Yes. Okay, anything else on this section, which brings us through question ninety nine, I believe?
I guess I have a question about ninety six, average time to process NCIC state requests. I guess I'm kind of, what are you looking for for information out of that?
It just adds to the time processing, it adds to the, to the workload. So if you, and this maybe, this has been a hard question for some of the past, and I think, Jim, you're not the first time it's come up. Do you even, some of them don't even acknowledge it, how long it actually takes them to process an NCIC request. So it might, you know, they make it that traffic stop and they, they processing, are they confirming that warrant? Do, do you have a way to have that information? Could that come from the state?
Yeah, that's my, my second question would, I don't think the state would capture that, but.
Okay.
It's a question that we can ask.
If I asked you that question that way, now that you understand that, would you be able to tell me? Do you have any idea what an average month?
I'd have no clue. I'd, I'd have absolutely no clue.
Okay, understand. It, and again, so clarify some of these questions, some of the, they may not be able to answer because they just don't, they don't know, they don't track that. They never had given, come up in, in that part of it, which is perfectly acceptable. If it's not, we'll simply NA, we'll move on with it. So yes, very good question, sir.
So on, on that same question, I also recommend. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Jen.
What are you actually trying to get, Rance? Is it actually a return time on the NCIC system?
No, no, not, not evaluating the system, it's more of a, it's a, it's more of a workload for, for the processing. And you know, how long does it take to, to actually process that out? It kind of ties in, it ties into the questions above, you know, how long on, on average, how long do you, between you taking that call to would you process that call out and send it back out? That, that's the part that it kind of ties into that.
Well, if you ask the road cops, they're going to say it takes a century to get the info back to them. But what they don't see is that the dispatcher's still answering other phone calls and making, you know, other calls related to that, whether it's a car stop or an incident or whatever. So I, I think that that question is almost artificial because if you're sitting in a Burlington dispatch center and you can task other dispatchers to call the wrecker, call the medical examiner, call the supervisor, blah, 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 then you can make the query and return the information out to the field quickly. But if you have to juggle all those balls, then it's going to take a lot longer. But I'll go back to my first answer, which is, it feels like a lifetime when you're the cop on the street.
Exactly. And, and as we had just notated, and, and we've seen this again, some of these questions, keep in mind that these are standard questions that we always put in every one of them to ask, and some places track and some places don't. And Jim, you're not, you're not an outlier there going, I have no idea how long it takes us to process.
I also look at it from a different perspective. I enter restraining orders for the county. So that's NCIC paperwork for me. I could sit down and give you time involved in our, and as it relates to that, but a return on a traffic stop, no, I can't give you that.
Exactly. And with that note right there, that one, those entering those restraining orders, they could, that could actually roll over into the ancillary duties that are not a core function of the center. Would you agree? So, yeah, so that's, that's where you, you kind of, you got to see that and, and we, this is a question that has come up and I, I've got hit with this is not, not all the time. They're going to be able to answer this question. It's perfectly to Jen's point is that it may just get wrapped up in everything else. But then you, I have seen bigger centers where they have someone dedicated just to running all those inquiries. And they do all that stuff for anybody on the traffic stop at the time, and that does go quicker. And they track that because that is that dispatcher's primary function. However, in smaller places, that one or two dispatcher center locations, they're doing all of it. They're also dispatching the fire EMS at the same time and running a traffic stop altogether, and they'd have no idea. So if that, if that's kind of where we're going with that, if it's, I, I have a feeling what I'm, what I'm, what I'm hearing, it's going to be a lot of kind of an NA or unable to answer because they're not tracking that separately, which is fine, perfectly fine. Rick, I think you have, I'm sorry.
So on, on questions ninety four, ninety five, and ninety six, in the parentheses, there's a one month average is acceptable. And so when I look at that, I say, oh, I'm allowed, it's okay if it takes one month for this process to take place. So I don't think that's what you mean by that, but that, you know, I, how it's, how it comes across is sort of like, I got to, yeah, if it's, if it takes a month, that's okay to get this done. So I, I'm, I think I'd clarify what you mean by that in each case, you know what I mean?
Gotcha. Words mean things, correct, Rick?
And, you know, if one month's the average, people might be getting information in two minutes and they're saying, oh, we're way out of the process, so I'm good. I don't, I don't, and I don't think that's what you're trying to convey there.
It is definitely not. It's, and, and we know, we know you could do those averages over weeks and months. And Barbara, I'm sure you've done all kinds of different reports related to that. So again, that's the reason we're looking for, that one month period of time would be, would be fine to give us the number we're looking for to answer the question. But Rick, I get your point on, on how that's worded.
I think that's what you mean, but it could be interpreted a number of different ways.
Gotcha, understand.
Thank you.
Excellent. Anything else on this section before we move on? To the leadership and planning section. So this looks to be questions one hundred through one oh four. I have no comments on this one. Anybody else?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead, Rick.
So one of the key elements of our program is to understand governance. And so, you know, I, I, there isn't a governance section. I'm wondering leadership, planning, and governance, or, or should we have a separate governance? I mean, the, the governance that, that, that is, is active or not, you know, as we've learned, is real, is, is really essential. And so how are they governing themselves? is really, is really essential. And so how are they governing themselves? And these, these following sections, and we're looking at budget and finance. I mean, it's driven by the governance model, and the governance model, you know, affects how much revenue in a dispatch center, how much they have to pay and who's paying, whether or not they can afford it, and whether or not they're collecting enough revenues, and whether or not revenues are a challenge, or how are they governing themselves? Is it fair and equitable? And so, you know, at some point, I think it, you know, we need to get, you know, get information on the governance. Is there a charter? Is it formal? Is it informal? And I don't know if this is the right place to add it in, but I I don't know how the task force thinks, but you know, from our experience, you know, gaining insight into the governance, its strengths, its weaknesses, this could be a good opportunity to gather that information. And I don't know if this is the right place to insert it, or if it needs a separate section, just.
Question one oh two seems to, question one oh two starts to get into that. So maybe that could be expanded or followed up on.
It does. You're absolutely right.
That can make the difference to a lot of particularly small agencies. I I know, you know, from from my experience, my agency and the agencies in my county were at one point dispatched by one facility who was calculating how they paid for their facility by simply adding up all the external agencies and then offsetting the entire operation of their internal operations for for their own agencies by letting the external people pay for it. Whereas the agency that, the, the, the facility that we're currently being dispatched at includes their own agencies before they divvy up how much they're going to charge you for a call. And I can tell you that that is a significant difference in our in in what we pay on a, you know, like a per call basis.
Acknowledged on both parts, Rick, on that. Without having a complete big answer at this point, let me dig into that a little bit more and see if we want to add some more to that. This is a good section. I think it'd be easy just to add governance to the to the section itself, and then maybe add some additional questions to that to kind of to kind of pull into that. I think also what's going to wind up happening is when we get onsite, we're going to want to dig into this a little bit more for them to explain a bit more of that. Which I know that sometimes some of these questions are really hard to be able to articulate that in words when they have to type it in. And then we can sit there and have those one-on-ones with them and pull that information out on the onsite piece. So.
Yeah, I I think if you have a governance model, can we have a copy of it? I mean, if you gather it, then on site, if you, you have, if you gather that information in advance, I'm not, not necessarily asking their opinion on it, you know, via questionnaire, but to gather it so that you can assess it and and make it part of your onsite inquiry. I think it'd be important. The governance can make or break, you know, the operational continuity and and fluidity of these of these dispatch centers, as we've discovered.
Yes, sir. We got, I got it.
I would look to maybe add a checkbox for that on question one-ten. I mean, I know you can always ask about it, but it's nice to have a reminder specifically.
Yep.
Copy of the governance agreement.
Agreed. I have that note there too, Phil. You're right.
Okay. Excellent. Anything else here on this section, leadership, planning, and now governance, apparently? All right. Moving on then to budget and finance. Questions one oh five to one oh nine. Um, I have a note here on one oh six.
Hold on. I will add before, just for an explanation on this. Now, there is the question. And may want to just, there is also in the the very next piece that we're getting to is the checklist. Where we already, we're going to, you know, ask for a copy of the budget anyway. And it's, we notated in the question, we might want to get to, you don't need to type all that out right here, because I know that that could be very cumbersome. There's a lot of information can be put there. So I may retitle that a little bit to make sure we get it up front and say, look, don't spend a lot of time trying to type all that into these boxes. If you have it, at least acknowledge it, and then and then you'll see it, you'll see a request or, you know, the data upload. So I may tweak that response a little bit more, but go ahead, Barbara.
I think my only comment here was the nine-on-one board can provide costs related to our system, which should be factored in, you know, for the overall cost of emergency communications in the state. But we'll need it also for for the dispatch function, for sure.
Right.
And then my last comment on this section was on question one oh eight. I think you can remove the nine-one-one tax.
Okay.
There, the taxes are collected, well, fees are collected at the state level through the Vermont Universal Service Fund. And nine-one-one is one of the things that fund supports.
So there is no individual, there's not a local level tax that they can leverage or that they collect at all. Okay, gotcha. So, you know, again, this is, this is a state-to-state thing. Some states have them, some don't. So, yeah, we can take it off.
Yeah. Okay.
I have a general, I have a general question about this. In in terms of one oh five, I mean, I fully understand why we need to understand the, you know, the detailed costs, operational costs. But I, I'm wondering, are folks going to be hesitant about providing that information? I mean, I understand it's public records achievable, but you know, once you start digging into costs, some folks are a little hesitant about sharing costs with entities they don't know. And so, you know, I I just want to know if the task force, you know, if we need to grease the skids here or let them know, because, you know, we're asking for information that they're going to perceive as quite confidential to their operating focus.
I don't see as much of that a problem with most municipalities that we're going to be asking for this information from, because it is public information. The problem I see in some of these, and I've seen in the past, some of the other studies that have been done, some of the dispatching budgets are integrated into the police department budget, so it's hard for them to pull them apart.
Exactly. We have seen that. And again, for example, have seen that. And in some cases, we just have to address that to the individual agency and see if they can either break it out. And if they can't, then we we might not just get that information. We kind of have to just work around it without, without them. But yes, have seen it and deal with it, but we we'd kind of break it down to dealing with the individual agency at the time.
We do have some of the out-of-state agencies that dispatch for us and at least one or two private dispatching that may have a problem with providing information. And I recognize that fact.
Yeah, and and we do too. We always know what we're talking to thirty-seven, we're going to send out thirty-seven requests. And we may not get all thirty-seven back. We, and we know that we're, we're going to, but we're going to do a lot of follow-up, and we're going to try to do our best to get that. But we're going to pull it as much as we can.
Excellent. Uh, anything else on this section? Moving on then to question one-ten, the final question. The data request checklist. I just had a question about towards the bottom, what an ILA is, and and perhaps we should add a definition and also a definition for MOU, in case people, in case it's not clear.
Actually, that just needs to be, an ILA is just another version of an MOU. I think people understand MOUs better, so we're, I'm going to just take the ILA out, put the MOU in, and we'll define that out.
Yes. And then on the last one, the list of adopted national standards, we may want to specify here again, you know, specifically for the dispatch, for the dispatch motion.
Gotcha.
Anybody else have comments on the data request checklist item?
Just as Phil mentioned earlier, I was going to recommend that we request the, you know, the governance charter, any documentation on governance at this, add this to the list as well.
Already on there. Gotcha.
All right. So I, one, one, I went back and looked at staffing and and also on the budgets. And as we know, oftentimes, there's a lot of overtime for for telecommunicators because of insufficient staffing. And and I, you know, I looked for questions for looking at, you know, so see a variety of questions focused on, you know, time off, but I didn't see a question specific to overtime. And so I wanted to know, you know, not to take us backwards, because it's in this budget section too, if if we should, you know, determine how, you know, be sure that that's part of what we determine, because oftentimes, it's that additional governor, additional overtime that's required to, you know, to overcome staffing limitations or staffing shortages. And then also is part of, you know, increasing the budget in some situations. And I just want to be sure that we don't overlook gathering that information as well.
Acknowledged, Rick. I'm making a note about it. It a lot of times the overtime is covered in the budget piece of that as far as the staffing, because they look at that as a financial matter. It is not necessarily a staffing matter. But I'm going to make a notated notation of it here. I know we address it, and it may get into more of the details when we get onsite, we get it, dig into that more.
Yep.
And or, and or, it becomes readily apparent when we get the budgets and we see that the overtime line item, hopefully they they have that, and you're going to automatically start picking out really quick that they're obviously spending a lot of time on, or spending a lot of funds on overtime. But gotcha. Acknowledged.
Yeah. And and overtime cuts two ways. I mean, some folks really want the overtime because it beefs up the amount of, you know, their salaries or the amount of money they're taking home. And others, it's just overloading them. So there's a, there's pros and cons from the staffing, I'm sure. But it'd be important to know if, but we're, you know, we run, you know, if any dispatch center or PSAP is running a lot of overtime because they just can't keep the staffing up. And then what's our strategy to help them with staffing, retention, and 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 hiring?
There's also the overtime factor.
I think that's going to be one of the items that's going to be big, you know?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, it always is. It's it's a big one. And there's also overtime. A lot of the way, it depends on how they do the schedules. Sometimes the schedule already builds in overtime. So you kind of have to break that out and go, if it's already a built into the schedule, then that's already a given, correct? So now you kind of look at, you got to look past, you got to look past that point and go, oh, is this overtime? Because because of, like, like you mentioned, Rick, is it overtime past the fact that we're understaffed? And we had, and we had to pay out additional overtime to get that done. So yes, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Does this data, I want to make sure the data request, the, the, that section makes sense as far as the explanation. This is, you don't have to have everything that's on this list. If you don't have it, don't create it. Just kind of look through there. This gives you an idea about anything that you do have on hand. And then you would upload it, and there would be, you just don't see it yet. But there would be a link there that they would upload that separately. So.
Yes. I I think if you make that clear also in your opening, you know, in the opening paragraph, that, you know, if you can't respond, don't, or you know, I don't want to make the opening, you know, the the background information overloading. But I think if you give them that kind of direction upfront, that might be of benefit to them as well.
We are, and I don't know, Rick, if I was in the initial conversations about this, I know Barb and Jen, we had as far as, we're also.
Team together.
Yeah, we're going to have, well, and they're, they're going to preempt it or kind of put it, push it out ahead of us. And that way, we can put that information in there. And then what you're seeing here is also going to be, there's going to be a body of an email that probably will be authored by me, but it'll be coming from me to say some additional comments. And it's, it's hitting exactly where you're, where you're at right now. So.
Understood. I appreciate that.
Excellent. All right. We're through the questions. Any other comments from task force members? I see your hand, Kim, and I'll give you an opportunity from task force members or televate first on the data collection. Okay.
I just want to say, I just want to say thanks for the extra time, and I appreciate the commitment that you guys all showed today going through this. And it's obvious everybody did their homework. Thank you.
I do too. I appreciate it. I'm glad you all went through that. I know it's a slog to try to, to go through that many questions, and and it really helps. But it also, it very much helps from from MCP's point of view, because, you know, sometimes we write it in a more holistic manner to a lot of how we've done a lot of the data. But we also need to break it down to more the Vermont perspective. And that's, this is why this is really good to to kind of get through this. And and there's going to be a couple more, I'm sure there's going to be a couple more drafts of this by the time we get done with that, but that, but I appreciate that as well. It helps me, because a lot of times, it's just like, Barbara, like you said, I I don't know that particular answer. So until I either talk to you and or get that information, so we can, we can hammer this out on the front side, which then in turn makes it easier for the agency on the backside to ask, you know, we can ask and answer the question because it's already clear to them.
Excellent. So here's what I propose. There's a lot of, there was a lot of discussion and really good discussion on this. I suggest that the task force chairs and televate, Dom and Rick, continue to work with Mission Critical to incorporate all this feedback and kind of the intent or our understanding of the intent of all of this discussion. And then when we have a more final product to produce, we'll get it back in front of the entire task force for approval. A little caveat here, though, if we can get this done before two weeks from now at our next regularly scheduled meeting, we'll call a special meeting to advance this so that we're not waiting. Do task force members have any objections to that approach or any comments on that approach? Brady? That's how we'll go.
Be helpful if.
Rick, go ahead.
I was just going to say it'd be helpful if Rance can, you know, highlight, I mean, I don't think, I don't know about tracking within the the Google Docs format, but highlight where the changes were made so that we can just, you know, review back to those, those areas that have been changed. I think that'd be helpful for the next review.
Yeah, I think we, I think I can figure out what do that so we can keep track of it.
Thank you.
Excellent.
I think I cut off Ron.
Yes. Ron, did you have a comment?
I did not.
Okay.
Okay.
So I did, I will allow, Kim, I see your hand, a brief, very brief period for public comment on the data survey questions. Kim, go ahead.
Thank you. You should include something about dead zones. The people using this system know where the dead zones are, and you can at least ask them about it. Second, I governance is going to sinker this whole project or make it work. And Rick Burke is absolutely correct. I suggest you look at the criteria that DPS put out for the governance when they were originally looking for grants. I think there's a federal requirement for certain amounts of governance. What you need to have essentially is a single board with taxing authority. And the long run object of this is not technology, it's going to be cost. What is the average per person cost for dispatching service in each community? Because if you build this like the education system with a local contribution and state support, you're going to need to know those numbers. And that's where you need to get to the bottom of this. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Kim. That's good input, and feel free to send any additional input to that task force email address. Any other public comment on the data survey questions?
Yes, Steve Whitaker here.
Go ahead, Stephen.
Thanks. I I have to look at it from a point of view of the folks that I'm talking to and, and and they're, what's in this for, what's in this for them to make them want to go through a thirty-three-page survey and and reveal all this information? There's no vision. There's no offer or assurance that they're going to get any benefit out of this. You, you, we're lacking a coherent architecture that would motivate anyone to go through the tedious task of answering this survey. And true, the the bigger, you know, PSAPs will have paid staff and who can devote time to it. A lot of the smaller ones or the out-of-state ones, you know, thinking, you know, the New Hampshire counties or or the Fire Mutual aid down in Keene, or Colbrook, or North Adams, Mass, or Washington County, New York, they're just going to look at this thing and roll their eyes and say, what are these people up to? And what, what right do they have to saddle us with this much work answering these questions? So I'm getting back to the without an architecture, without a vision of what's in it for, for the local first responders? And I think you're, you're barking up a tree here. This is I've collected most of the the data on the agencies and the and the costs being paid, and y'all apparently are re- And y'all apparently are re, re, redoing all that. But I, I think you, I made my point that you're, you're lacking a coherent vision while you go about spending nine million on, on the department's internal systems and you're, you're heading yourself up for a train wreck.
All right. Thank you, Stephen. Any other public comment? I don't think we have any other members of the public, but. Okay. Hearing nothing then, we'll move on to, uh, is there any new business from task force members for today? Ready? Hearing none. The next meeting date is actually already set on our calendars for May eighth, I think it is, two weeks from today. As discussed, if we need to have a special meeting in between to advance these, the data survey questions, um, we will do that. Uh, and so absent anything else, I would love to hear a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Jim.
I will second that.
Thank you, Ron. All in favor of adjourning, raise your hand or indicate by saying aye. All right. I see Ron. I see Jim. I hear Jen. My hand is up. So thank you very much for, um, all of this work. I'm glad that it was useful for Mission Critical. And we're looking forward to continuing the discussions. I hope everybody has a great afternoon and, uh, we'll talk again soon. Thank you.